Out my screen. Now it says that it's being recorded.
There you go. Now it just came on.
Yeah, I'm recording it. I'll enter the cloud. I'll send you the link.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Um. Uh, what I didn't do is I need to see Brendan from Mike Florio. Um, we have a quorum. Uh, there's no other alternates to seat, so we're all set. I don't have any comments tonight. Um, well, yes, I do. We're going to have some, uh, more discussion tonight about, um, some administrative tasks. Um, particularly you'll notice on the agenda that we're going to be talking about some policy issues and how we want to proceed with those. Um, so hopefully we can have a good discussion about that at the end. Uh, with that, we'll move to the public hearing. Um. Let's see, uh. Ellen, can you read the, uh, notice of public hearing?
Well, we just had this discussion since it's a continuation, there was.
Oh, that's right. Continuation. You're correct. So there is no, uh, notice of public hearing. The, um, correspondence and all of that is online and, uh, is available at the link on the, um, uh, Acrobat file for the agenda. So that's available. Is there an agent or applicant here to speak? Bob?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, yes, uh, we, I believe satisfied all the conditions that were, um, uh, put in front of us two months ago. I got a, um, uh, proposed motion to, uh, approve from Abby and everything there looks routine and it looks, uh, you know, fine and acceptable to us. Uh, we're happy with it. Um, other than that, nothing really.
Yeah, I didn't see anything outstanding. Did anybody else have uh, questions about this for, uh, Bob?
Yeah, I have two questions, I guess.
Thank you. Go ahead, Martin.
First, um, we're seeing how you're the president of Red Wing Foundation. Um, how you propose managing the wetlands area? Are you gonna be weeding out invasives or just leaving it alone, basically?
Can I answer that now?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, so actually I've given some thought to that. Um, the area was once a field, it's now being, um, overgrown and, um, I haven't figured out how I'm gonna do it yet, but I would probably end up, uh, mowing some of the grass areas. It'll probably get a pain in the butt. Um, but, uh, we'll probably, uh, have, uh, blocks of areas mown to, um, encourage, uh, appropriate nesting habitats for some of the birds that might be down there. Other than that, uh, nothing really, other than, uh, you know, that there's an open, um, driveway there. We'd probably try and figure out a way to restrict access, so um, we wouldn't get people dumping stuff down there. Uh, but other than that, uh, uh, it's a uh, potential endangered and threatened species habitat. It's got an overlay of, uh, critical habitat. We'd like to pretty much leave it the way it is and, and just manage it for, uh, suitable bird nesting habitats. Other than that, nothing.
Which, which I guess leads to my second question, which is, is it possible to have limited access through the access road that already exists there so that people can actually see the wetland that's being protected?
Yeah, I would rather not. Um, again, I've had a fair amount of experience over the years with the, uh, uh, DEP with, uh, with respect to, uh, uh, restricted habitats for threatened endangered species and, uh, they generally frown upon, um, you know, open access to those areas. Um. So, based on prior experience and, uh, the, the critical nature of the habitat, I would, uh, rather, uh, leave it restricted access.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, are there any other questions from the commission? Okay, um, just for the record, since we're on tape, I do need to, um, ask if there are any questions from the public or any, uh, information the public would like to testify to here. Um, saying that, as I know that Carrie Allen is the only non, uh, part of this meeting and she's our representative from the board. Um, uh, so, uh, she's not really necessarily public, but if she wants to speak. Carrie? No, 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 can't coax her out. Okay, so, any last questions from the commission? Hearing none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second by Alan, thank you. Oh, wait, we have a visitor in the waiting room. Okay. Um, okay, thank you. Um. Any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. Um, can we have a roll call vote on, uh, the closing of the public hearing?
Mike Knutson?
Aye.
Ellen Dahlgren?
Aye.
Eddie Albarino?
Aye.
Martin Jaffe?
Aye.
Alan Kravitz?
Aye.
Adam Moore?
Aye.
And Brandon Saunders?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Now we move to the application reviews and this, we stay with the same application. Um, but this is the discussion just for the commission. Um. What points do people want to discuss here? Um, I, uh, as I said before, it looked to me like, um, things were addressed that were questions. Did anybody have any, anything they wanted to, uh, ask or add as extra conditions? Well, this is sounding simple. Uh, with that said, then, um, would anyone like to make a motion?
Can, can I make a motion to approve?
Well, I think, um, Martin was going to do it with some specific language.
Yes, uh, I moved to approve the re-subdivision application, PZC twenty-two twenty, as shown on plans entitled Eagle Landing Subdivision one sixty-one West Main Street, Clinton, Connecticut, prepared by Osprey International, uh, Environmental Engineering LLC, revised through January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three with conditions one through three and adopt findings A through C of the staff report.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ellen. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, just, uh, should, uh, Martin's motion say the, the staff report dated such and such? I mean.
Yeah, probably be good.
Okay, the staff report dated March eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any, any other discussion? Hearing none. Um, can we have a roll call vote on this, uh, motion?
Mike Knutson?
Aye.
Ellen Dahlgren?
Aye.
Eddie Albarino?
Aye.
Martin Jaffe?
Aye.
Alan Kravitz?
Aye.
Adam Moore?
Aye.
And Brendan Saunders?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we move on to, um, item six, correspondence. We had a letter that we received from the town of Killingworth. Um, this is a proposed change to their regulations on accessory apartments. Um. I, uh, really don't have any other comments other than, you know, to note that it seems to be making it, um, you know, more compliant.
Do we need to respond to them? I mean, do we need to send? We have no comments?
Go ahead.
It's not mandatory. Just let us know what you want to do.
I suggest some comments. One is, um, under subsections three, I guess, C three, um, when they, the threshold for, uh, affordable housing, uh, they put down sixty percent, whereas the state law thirty G says eighty percent of, of median household income. So it's a variance with the state, state statute as to what the threshold should be to be eligible for affordable housing. Uh, that's one issue I had, um, that they may want to bring it into compliance with the state affordable housing law. Uh, secondly, they talk about, um, uh, when they look at the incomes, uh, they talk about incomes within the area and that's undefined. Do they mean the census tract? Do they mean the town? Do they mean Middlesex County? Do they mean River Cog region? It's, it's unclear what they mean, um, when looking at the aggregated, uh, household income to be used as the, um, you know, the trigger kind of for, for the affordable housing approval. So I think, uh, you know, we can say we really didn't, or at least I didn't really understand what they were proposing based, based on the fogginess of, of, uh, uh, the definitions.
Yeah, the first point, maybe I misinterpreted it. I thought that sixty percent was a higher sta- was essentially a higher standard than eighty percent.
Sixty percent is more restricted. When, when eight thirty G applications come in, typically speaking, you have to have thirty percent of the proposed housing meet affordability criteria. Fifteen percent of that has to be eighty percent and fifteen percent has to be at the sixty percent AMI.
So they're opening it up. That's a good thing then. We, we should say we would support that by lowering the standards.
We've got no, no jurisdiction to even.
No, I know.
Comments or information unless we're gonna intervene. Why, why do we even bother?
Not gonna intervene, but, okay. Yeah, I think they need clarity as to the area. I mean, we could just suggest that, that, that perhaps it'll make it clearer.
Yeah, I think your second point, we should, you know, it, it would make sense to have a, a letter from us saying that the point seems unclear thus and just leave it at that.
Our jurisdiction extends to adverse effects on on Clinton.
Right.
Right, and so we would have to intervene or or you're just, you're just, you know.
That's right.
You make all the comments you want. They don't mean any.
You can make a comment, absolutely. But no intervention.
No, I can't intervene. No.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about intervening either, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it sounds like, uh, we've got a strong opinion that we shouldn't respond at all, so we'll leave it at that.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Administrative review. Uh, staff reports.
Sure. So just a few quick updates of things. Both the bulk of the work that we've been doing over last month has been really related more to the regulations and some of the policy pieces that we'll get into later, so I won't touch on those now. Just a couple of things for folks to be aware of. Um, there's a couple of regional planning efforts going on right now. If folks are interested in going to the River Cog website, I believe it's river cog.org. Um, there is, uh, SEDS Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, um, which is sort of a regional economic development planning document for the region that's being drafted right now and is open for public comment, um, as well as the Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is also open for comment now. So if anybody is interested in regional planning issues and wants to take a look at those, um, you know, we'll, we've sent some comments in on the SEDS and we'll be doing so on the, uh, MTP, but just in case anybody's interested, it's there. Um, something in locally to think through and, and hopefully participate in, uh, the Harbor Management Commission is, has launched its survey, um, that is up and available for folks to take. You can go to the town, uh, the town of Clinton's main webpage, um, so clintonct.org and right up at the top, Mary's posted a link, um, for that survey. So please take it, spread the word. We want as many folks, um, who are engaging with our coastal resources in areas, um, you know, really to, to participate. So if you know of anybody who would be interested, um, or if they have questions about what's going on, they can certainly give a call, but, but otherwise we just want to get a good response for that survey. Um, some of the things, other pieces that have been going on, uh, the, the council had its, uh, final budget approval meeting, so then before it heads to, to the public for review, um, and the P O C D funding for year one was still with, was maintaining capital, so that's still there as was, uh, funding for G I S for some of the analysis work that we want to be able to do in-house for the commission going forward. So, um, so that was a, a good outcome for budget so far. And I think that's generally it. Um, I am meeting with the planners from, uh, Sabre, Westbrook, uh, and Fenwick, um, later this week to talk a little bit more about the coastal resiliency RFQ and getting that out on the street to, to pick a consultant. And we'll talk more about that piece a little bit later as well. So those are my, those are my pieces.
Thank you.
And for me, um.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Oh, I just, uh, working a lot with Abby on, um, a lot of the updates to the zoning regulations. We've had some really good discussions about that. I've been giving her a lot of the history on things and, you know, talking about things that I think require clarification and we've, you know, I think had done some really productive work. Um, I like many of you, I attended the Connecticut Bar Association, uh, workshop this past Saturday. Uh, you know, if any of you have been to it in the past, I'm sure you have. It's from nine to four and it's led by attorneys and every half an hour, a different attorney presents on a different land use topic. Um, and I also attended CAWS this past week, which was the Connecticut Association of Wetland Scientists. Um, I put an article in Clinton Events. It's a little early for submission, but I've been having a plethora of sign, uh, unpermitted signs going up. It's like sign season. So a lot of, um, you know, I've been sending out a lot of letters and calling a lot of people to let them know that they have to have permits for signs and they can't put up any fluttering, you know, swoop flags or things like that and, and sandwich boards need permits, et cetera. Um, but other than that, just, you know, dealing with a couple of other issues with, uh, wetlands with some enforcement as well. Um, it's been a little bit slow, as you can see from your agenda in terms of the commission applications, but it's given us time to work on some of the work we need to do in the department on the big picture things, uh, with the regulations and some of the other work. So, um, I think that's about it for me.
Thank you. Okay. The next item in, under administrative, uh, is discussion on potential updates to the zoning regulations. Um. Let's see, we, uh, had last month, uh, several, um, items that, uh, Abby brought forward that we need, you know, that, uh, we were, had under consideration. We asked her first to look at the low hanging fruit, so to speak. And, um, the packet that they sent out today or it was last week, they sent out, um, uh, included all those changes, um, in one file. So it was, uh, fairly easy to digest. Um, Abby, do you want to present any of this?
Sure, I can give you just kind of an overview of where we are, um, and then some of the things that I think still needs some, some additional work and then, uh, and then we'll start to talk about how you want to proceed with reviewing those things, giving your feedback and, and how we go forward. Um, section three definitions, you know, we have gotten to a certain point in definitions. I know we talked about it the last meeting, potentially moving all of the, the definitions from the various sections into section three, so they only occur in one place. We haven't done that just because it's, it's a lot of cut and paste work that just we haven't, um, quite got to yet. But that's something that we can do if we want to manage it before this would potentially go to public hearing. Um, what we did try to do was go through section twenty-seven and for the things that either aren't defined well or, um, we've had, you know, ambiguity in the past with relative to enforcement or when people come in asking questions about how to develop their properties, we tried to lend some clarity to those. You'll see some new definitions throughout in some places, um, where we've had that ambiguity, we've specifically referenced to the section where the definitions exist. So we can talk about, um, you know, sort of the structure of where those are located, but, um, it will, there's just a lot of cross references. Once we take those definition sections from other places in the regs and move them here. So it's a little bit of a bigger undertaking. Um, but we're, we're moving forward with that. Application procedures, uh, the section four is really just trying to, we tried to clean up a little bit, um, and make sure that references to online permitting are taken care of and, and any sort of, you know, sort of sections undefined are, are out of that section. Lot line revisions, uh, section five was a quest, was a, an element that Kathy had asked us to add in, uh, to make sure that the crab requirements for review were put in there. So that's, that's taken care of. One of the bigger changes in section fourteen is under vendors, um, and, and as we kind of had the discussion in the last piece, we've left a couple out, um, entirely. So, so basically stationary vendors and seasonal outdoor uses, we haven't really made any changes, um, to those particular sections. What we did do was take out transient ventures from the reg- transient vendors from the regulations entirely. And so anybody who is going door to door would no longer require a zoning permit. In part because it's not tied to a particular land use. It's essentially someone parking somewhere and, and pedaling, um, and, and that is, it, it already permitted through the police department. And so it seemed redundant to try to have a zoning, um, enforcement potential, um, something that is not really tied to a particular property. So we tried to remove that from the regs to make it a little bit simpler for folks, just to get one permit from the town. And then the other one, um, the event vendors, we talked a little bit about the redundancy there with folks having to get the event permitted, get each individual vendor for the event permitted. Um, so we tried to say, look, rather than drag each person in and each, you know, to say, you know, pay your, pay your fee that may e- into your profits for that event, um, and, and maybe affect your desire to participate. Why don't we go ahead, just permit the event? Um, we can update that section a little bit so that we have better coordination between departments and review and, and basically said that even individual vendors aren't necessary as long as the event permit shows where they are, how they're hooking up, you know, are they, do they have, are they on generator power? Are they having tents? That kind of thing. And then we can get the right other permitting spokes in place. So that's probably one of the sections that has the biggest, uh, area of change. Section, uh, twenty-seven, basically in the non-residential districts, um, we had that problem of the not applicable, which no one really understood what it meant relative to prohibited. And so we tried to update those. And in that section, when doing that N A update and, and, and moving things around, a lot of it had to do with, um, the size, the physical size of businesses being permitted. And so what we tried to do was look at what the intent and effect was of each of those individual sizes being either permitted or not N A depending on, on the zone. Um, and tried to consolidate them in a way that was easy for folks to say, okay, are you clearly in this bucket or are you clearly in this bucket? And so that way, when folks come to talk to us, we can give them good advice. Um, section twenty-eight, so for, this is sort of a catch-all section. Um, we tried to put in some more clear standards for off-street parking, uh, and thank you to Marty for giving us some, some guidance on the, the federal standards for vehicle size designs. What we tried to do here was generally allow a larger box truck size of, of vehicle to come in. So we talked about, um, very concrete ways for Kathy to measure in the field when she gets a complaint, because that's usually how the stuff comes in. Folks are usually not coming into us for a permit. They're usually coming in after the neighbors have complained. And so, um, and so what we wanted to do is just make sure that we, we clarify what that should look like. Livestock, uh, pygmy goats would now have companions in the town of Clinton, so we're stretching our hearts out to, to smaller breed, breed livestock. Um, outdoor entertainment, again, kind of going back to the vendor section, we did add some additional standards, trying to make sure that there's just some belt and suspenders in that, in that piece, um, for us to, to get more detail from people so that we don't miss any of the things we would have gotten from those event vendors previously. Accessory dwelling unit standards, uh, we tried to update those to, uh, be in compliance with P A twenty-one, twenty-nine. And some of the things I think that happened in the previous adoption from, um, what you did was, was based on the drafts that were going through the legislation and you were super proactive in getting that change made. Um, and the, what happened, I think, uh, the final legislation was slightly out of step with what was adopted in the Clinton zoning regulation. So this is just an attempt to be sort of super strict. And I'll note, it's a little bit different from what we see in, in Killingworth in part because Clinton did not opt out of the provisions under this, this legislation. And so, um, so you have sort of a stricter adherence to that, that piece. So you, so for example, um, you're actually barred from requiring accessory units to be affordable. You have, um, options to incentivize it, but you can't, you can't kind of deviate from the state language there. Parking, um, in section thirty-three, we tried to, again, sort of bring some of the parking standards for multifamily residential into compliance with, um, with, uh, some of the, uh, residential, uh, pieces in twenty-one, twenty-nine. We added in the E D charging station language. We modeled that a little bit off of the town of Greenwich, um, as well as a language that's, that's just in the statute, just because they seem to have a good sort of succinct handle on it. Um, we also added an accessibility standard for parking spaces, which are required by building code, but we had no cross, cross-reference or any, even the word accessibility didn't really appear, um, within the regulations. So we tried to make sure that we covered that. And in the last piece, sign, section thirty-four, um, that is going to be a larger nut to crack and we want to make sure that we do a good job of it. And so, um, I think that one, you know, once we do some of this other work and we get kind of direction where folks want to go, um, I think we can add that in. And then another section that's not listed here, but came up that I think will come up, um, so through some of the housing conversation later on, um, when, when Michael and I were speaking, um, there are sections throughout the regulations where we're also out of compliance with Public Act twenty-one, twenty-nine relative to the minimum unit sizes, um, allowable in regulate, in, in our regulations. And essentially what we have to do is match building code. So whatever building code says for the smallest unit size is sort of where we're supposed to be. And there's places peppered throughout the regulations where that is not the case, um, and, and larger unit sizes are created. So, um, for what it's worth, that's an other section to review and we can get that to you soon, too. And so that's a lot at once, and I know this is a lot to slog through. So I think part of tonight's conversation is do folks have any particular questions, comments, or points of clarification that they need, um, or anything else that you want to go through as we kind of strategize how you want to roll this out going forward?
Okay, well, I'll start and then ask other members to jump in. Um. I would like to try to, you know, I was, I thought most of, when I had read it, I was assuming that more things were, you felt they were more complete. But, um, I, I thought that, um, at least out of these, the vendor section looks like it would be ready to go for public hearing. I'm not sure from listening to you if all the other section, well, uh, clearly not all the other sections are ready. Um, so the question is, which sections do you think we could move forward on to, uh, move for public hearing? If I'm, because I'm obviously misunderstood something.
I, I don't think it's that it's incomplete. I just think that there, it's a question for you of, do you, so particularly for section three, do you want to take another crack at it later? Do you want to try to get some of these updated definitions in and then undertake a larger pro- project later to go to public hearing? Or do you want us to undertake the effort of moving every definition that we can find in the regulations into that section three, including all the cross references? So that's, I mean, so if we wanted to go forward with definitions with Eric, now we could. Um, section four is ready, section five is ready, vendors are ready, schedule of uses in section twenty-seven, as long as you agree with the breakdown of the areas that we established, um, then that, that could potentially be ready to go. I think twenty-eight is, is in good shape. Um, I also think thirty-three is in good shape. So, so, you know, things, I think what we'll find is that there are likely to be things that we're fixing in small measure here is these low hanging fruit elements that you may, as time goes on, say, look, you know, we need to really get into our parking regulations in a different way, um, and, and undertake a more comprehensive project. What this does is it just fixes a few quick things. And so, you know, so this isn't the comprehensive rewrite of the zoning regulations and, and not every section is included here. It's just what are the sort of quick fixes that can make some of the enforcement and predictability pieces a little bit easier?
That's what I had understood before. I was just afraid from the way you said that, some of that, that you, you were uh, hesitant on things. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because, just to piggyback on what Abby said, because I, I think she and I have spent some time, but I'd like to spend more time going through especially definitions and some other things that have come up with enforcement, especially that I don't have definitions for. In fact, there was one recently I had to use a dictionary, uh, definition. But, um, you know, so, so as Abby said, I think this will be like a first crack at it, just to fix some things, put some Band-Aids on some things, but this isn't going to be by any stretch the final complete revision.
Okay, thank you. Um, other members who would like to talk, Adam?
Typically, we, we would, the Regulations Committee would take a stab at this. Uh, we haven't had a Regulations Committee meeting in probably a year. Um, I, I've read through most of this. I see some things that I would want to comment and possibly change, even including sections twenty-eight, thirty-three. Um. Uh, you know, as far as the definitions go, I, I didn't, I, I read everything we did. I don't know that I have a lot of comment there, but there's some other stuff that I think I'd. I I read everything we did. I don't know that I have a lot of comment there, but there's some other stuff that I think I'd like at least the opportunity to either have a working session or make comments on.
And I I agree with that.
Yeah, I also uh think that uh we probably should consider each of these as a separate application. Uh, you know, not one application to change half dozen sections.
Okay, well, I part of that will be how they come out of regulations.
Well, okay, my input for our Regulations Committee.
So that that would certainly be a good next step. Um, Mike?
I just question if we have a Regulations Committee meeting, does it have to be by a Zoom or can it be in person?
It can be in person or by Zoom. Um.
We were doing them Zoom at like five or five thirty on Thursdays because we worked till seven. And that way everybody could attend. I know a couple of people, I think actually Adam one time was um on business and he had his um on hands free and he was able to participate.
That was that was probably every time.
Yeah, so you know, we like to make it flexible for everybody.
Yeah, and so, yeah, we can do what's best, uh, who would, you know, if you're willing to attend. Um, I, I think Thursday makes a lot of sense for the office, too. So um, yeah. Would we want to schedule, would we, we need to post that first, right? So we can't do it this week, but it could be. Um, I believe we could do it in two weeks, not next week, the following week.
You could do it on the thirtieth, yeah, the twenty third is already that that spot is already taken by another committee. So um, but yeah, the thirtieth, I believe, would be, I'm just checking the calendar right now. Um, yeah, so the thirtieth at five would work.
Okay, would uh anybody be interested in joining?
I'm checking my calendar.
I would.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think I could do it. Yeah, I guess I could be available by five.
Okay. Um, can we have a, do we need a motion to schedule a meeting? Want to do it just to be safe?
Yeah, yeah, it's it's up to you. It's not required, but never hurts.
Yeah, I don't think.
I don't think, yeah, I can't remember. It's been so long.
No, we just just schedule them.
The fact, so the meeting will be the uh thirtieth, Thursday, the thirtieth at five PM. And we'll do it um uh by Zoom.
And what we did last time was we did have a core group, but of course, everyone's welcome. So when we send it out, um, we send it to the whole commission. And then, you know, whoever comes, comes. Um, and if you can't make it and you have a comment, you know, you can certainly email us in advance or, you know, talk to Abby or me if you have something you really want to share.
Yeah.
It's really sets up an ad hoc commit committee.
Right, it's a committee of the whole. So we're, I mean, we all have responsibility. It's just that in the past, it's been a small group that has done most of the work. So um, you know, if you can attend, uh, I encourage you to do so. Depending on how long the meeting is, I can be there for the first part, but I wouldn't be able to spend the entire time.
The meetings were usually about an hour or an hour and fifteen minutes, something like that.
But, okay, um, with that, we'll move on. Oops, I gotta get the different form here. The next thing that we had was policy discussions. And we had two items on the agenda. One um is affordable housing as an issue. Um, this is a uh something, well, Eddie is knows about this too, because we were look, we had attended a um training session. And one of the things that came up or came out of that is that we have a lot of places in our regulations where we are not um consistent with state regulations or the state law. Um, so we've got a, we need to look at our um uh descriptions of affordable housing and how we um uh define it, how we restrict it and make sure that we move into compliance. This is not going to get us um, you know, close to the uh rate of affordable housing that the state wants everybody to get. That's not the point, but the regulations can't be more prohibitive than the state allows. And so we need to look at them and uh follow up on that. Um, anybody, let's see, Abby or Eddie, you you were both at the training. Or I don't know if Abby was at the training, Eddie was at the training. Did you have anything you noticed from that?
No, no, sir. I I have nothing to add, uh, other than e- everything, uh, you can, you can download everything from uh Yukon.
Yeah, it's a, it's a really good.
It's a, it's fantastic. It's, it has, it covers everything that we discuss here, so.
Okay. Um, did I miss anything, Abby?
No, I I think it's, I think, you know, the the sort of first piece of making sure we're compliant with state requirements is is super important. That seems to be something that we can do sort of in short order to to kind of go through the whole regs and identify those areas. And then similarly to what we're doing with the other sections, present them for your consideration in Regulations Committee. I think one of the things um that I would say, you know, after that first level of compliance, one of the questions and where I sort of tried to go with my memo was was sort of the bigger picture of what is the commission hoping to enable relative to housing choice in Clinton? And are there particular goals or other elements that you would like to start thinking through um relative to to housing policy? It can range through inclusionary zoning with fee and lieu. It can be how we perhaps incentivize accessory dwelling unit kind of things for for deep restricted units, those kinds of options. And so, you know, part of it, I was just curious if there is a a feeling or intent of the commission to go beyond strict compliance um or and and look at the next step. Well, you know, requiring minimums on projects over a certain size or, you know, ways to enable folks if they're building a business with some apartments on top to try to find a way to make it easier for folks to restrict um or or give them a reason to um things like density bonuses or other pieces like septic supports and those kinds of things. So I guess, you know, it's just really more of a uh uh test or a, you know, sort of a understanding for me of of where everybody is on on housing policy and and how, you know, where do you want to take the 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 bigger conversation, if if anywhere?
I I noticed that one, one thing, Mr. Chairman, that when when we um affordable housing, we really don't have much jurisdiction jurisdiction. And I remember the last uh affordable housing that went up on Liberty Street, we had uh members that, you know, that were um would, none of us were really uh in tune to what what all the uh requirements were. And people were trying to say it's not P O C D or it's not transit oriented. Um, that really has no bearing on on affordable housing. I know that. So that came out in in a discussion because a lot of people were asking, it was, there was um several hundred people, you know, that attended that, the discussions. So I, I mean, it's a lot, there's a lot involved in the affordable housing, you know, that we should know if we're gonna get into it with affordable housing. You understand what I'm saying? I mean.
Yeah, I do. I mean, I think um one of the things that would help um is making sure that all of us um have, and I can't do this off the top of my head, so I'm gonna, I'm not going to even try. Um, all of us have the same definition for what we mean when we say affordable housing.
Yes.
And uh be the the correct definition according to the state. Um, so I think that would help. Um, because I know in the past, in our uh when we presented things to the public or somebody's come in with something that has a few affordable units, there's been an outcry that we're uh allowing, you know, uh vagrants into the town or something like that. And that's, you know, there not a lot, not a lot of people are doing that, but that's a misunderstanding. It's affordable housing is housing that, you know, a, somebody working a regular job can afford, basically, you know. And um, we just need to make sure that, you know, we're uh cognizant of the fact that, you know, we don't want to close out, you know, school teachers or um, you know, first time homeowners or even, you know, kids that right out of high school that want to get an apartment, you know, while they're working a a job. You know, it, we've got to be, we, you know, try to be an affordable area for people to live in. Um, so everybody's not commuting. Well, nobody commutes to Clinton. Is that what we're saying? I don't know. We don't, we don't want to just be a fifty-five or older community.
Exactly.
Right, uh, Martin?
There, there, I don't think we collect any information on marketing of any development coming before us. We don't know what the rents will be for any apartments.
Well, that's why I believe Abby mentioned incentivizing, making some of the units affordable. Because then that that would be the, because we've had a couple uh applications recently that did have a few affordable units in them. Um.
That, that's only because the developer wanted them to be affordable. It's been mixed use, but otherwise we have no information as as to what the rents are for almost all of these developments.
Right, and you assume they aren't affordable. They they they're going, yeah.
It's it's generally market rate. I think what we're seeing in some um in in some cases, the the market rate rents that are out there are approaching that eighty first eighty percent affordability mark for folks. So and then, you know, so the the meaningful um sort of chunk of affordable housing would be more in that, you know, for folks making sixty percent of area median income. And I'm wondering if if i- in order to facilitate the conversation, if it makes sense just to have like a one-page fact sheet pulling out of the Affordable Housing Plan, but kind of summarizing for Clinton, here's our area median income. Here's what we mean by forty, sixty, eighty percent. Here's how the state defines it. Here is how eight thirty G sort of in a very short nutshell um kind of comes together. If there's any interest or need for that, we can, we can do that, too.
I believe that would be very helpful for us. I mean, I I I don't think that as a commission, we can in uh assess this unless we're all educated on it. And so I think that would be very useful. Um.
Well, that's basically the first three pages of the report.
It is, there's a lot, there's a lot of that plan. So it would be, it would be useful, yeah, for folks to to kind of take a look at that and then we can start to have some, you know.
Christie, you you attended that meeting, the meetings, you you seen all the conversations that people were, you know, about the eight thirty. I mean, everybody, it was all over the place. And and um, so there's a, there's a lot of education there that we should be cognizant of of the regulations, which is, but we don't have much to say as a town once they, once we approve something. I mean, they, they, they're on their own, right?
Well, there's a, there's a two-pronged element to this. So so if we're looking at the eight thirty G statute that it that enables folks to preempt zoning regulations where we don't meet ten percent, we're at two point eight right now. So so where we don't meet ten percent or we're not subject to a moratorium, we have an increase our our housing mix by a certain amount within a certain timeframe to get um a moratorium in a few years. That meet, that leaves us open to folks coming in and using eight thirty G statutes to enact their development. Um, and that's where we talked about that, you know, sort of thirty percent of their offered units have to be in that sixty or eighty, you know, that fifteen, fifteen percent of sixteen, eighty percent AMI. The um, so there's, there's the response to the eight thirty G piece and and the sort of philosophical question of is the commission hoping to enable and or or regulate in a way that sort of coerces folks to generate enough affordable housing to either qualify for a moratorium or perhaps less realistically get to ten percent affordable housing? Or are there other things that are driving the policy decisions about any potential changes or updates to regulations you might make? Um, you you know, are we doing it in response to the statute to protect the town from those kinds of 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 pieces? And how how often do we see them and how, you know, are there detrimental results to them? Or is there a different conversation about saying, look, we're going to try to, rather than try, you know, sort of take big chunks and look at the bigger developments? Um, we're going to try to find ways to integrate affordable housing choice throughout all the neighborhoods and the communities by saying, you know, there's, you know, deed restrictions or advertising. Um, see, you know, USDA loans or those types of things. So there's a lot, there's different ways that you can achieve some of that affordability increase. Um, and so I think that, you know, for for, when we talk about if if there is an interest in regulation amendments, knowing why and what we want to achieve will help us write a regulation that kind of gets to that point. Um, and so we just want to, I think, make sure that we understand where folks are, you know, sort of have their interests and what we're trying to do um as we go forward.
Another thing we talked about today was, um, I had asked Abby and she said we would implement this um in the office. We don't have a mechanism at this point to collect data or to track um how much affordable housing we have, because once it goes through, we're not keeping track. Well, if it went through five or ten years ago, are, is it still deed restricted? Who's who's checking those numbers? So we're going to make sure that we now put a mechanism in place to do that.
And well, and that's we, yes and no. So right now, we don't have that mechanism and there's a number of different ways that we can do it. Um, it will likely fall to our office, but one of the things um y- you know, we'll, we'll need to figure out is, you know, is there a requirement for folks who are either volunteering stuff if they're not coming through under eight thirty G? What is the format? And then us carrying through the reporting up to the state to make sure that our members are actually counted on the housing appeals list because that has not always happened in the past. So we want to make sure that we're getting credit, where where good work is being done.
Uh, how long have we been not keeping track? Uh, oh, you go, how far back do you go?
I'm not aware of any tracking of affordable units by the town um outside of perhaps, you know, town property. That that that's all I'm aware of. Um.
We have to look at the m- market because the market, old housing is just hyperinflated. Cost of ownership and rental.
Yeah. So. Yeah, so what we need to do, I needed to make sure I wasn't muted. Um, is uh, I I would like some of the data that you're talking about, the specific for Clinton. Um, that, and if we can't figure out exactly how much affordable housing we have right now, that doesn't have to be in there. It's, it would be, that's something we would want, but not, I understand if we can't get it. Um, yeah, they what Abby had included was in the one big thing um was our, was the Affordable Housing Plan. And that has some information that's, but it doesn't have as much of the real data, at least that I saw. Oh, yeah, it does. There it is on page five. Okay.
There, there is a lot in there. I think, you know, we can certainly sort of pull out some of the key points that might drive what your policy decisions may be. Um, but yeah, no, we're we're at two point eight, I believe. Uh, Liberty Place needs to be added in, so I'll be working with the state to make sure that we get credit for those units. Um, that's the only development that I, that is currently restricted that I'm aware of, um, that would 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 be eligible to be added in. Um, the restricted mortgages, the state tracks those. So there is on the housing appeals list, um, and I can send that out to everybody for twenty twenty-two. We had been, I think a few years ago, we were at two point nine five percent um at the highest. And and I think we're at two point eight now, because as housing continues to get developed, obviously, if we're not requiring at least ten percent affordability at process board um or some mechanism to create those units, we get a little farther behind. So it just depends on how many overall housing units we have. The thing that fluctuates most for us um are restricted mortgages. What we don't have any of tracked in Clinton anywhere is deed restricted mortgages, our services are deed restrictions. Um, so things that are by deed have to be, maintain a particular level of affordability in for a certain period of of years, whether it's forty ninety-nine, however that is set up. And so um that is one place where we may have an opportunity to create mechanisms. Um, so something to think about.
Okay.
So what we can, we can provide sort of a quick, a quick fact if if it's useful.
Any other comments or discussion from the commission at this time?
Is this with respect to strictly the things that are on the agenda or is this open comments or other agenda? Is this with respect to strictly the things that are on the agenda or is this open comments or other agenda items? I mean, it just, we never did discuss whether we were ready to go back to in-person meetings last month.
Well, this is, this is, we're on the agenda right now. And because this is, this is,
That's true. We haven't gotten to coastal resiliency yet. Okay.
Correct. We have not gotten to coastal resilience yet. We haven't gotten to plan of conservation development either.
No, P O C D, we haven't got that one either.
Okay, so is there any other discussion people would like to have about affordable housing now? Or where we're, where we want to go with this? I mean, I think we need to move forward with making our regulations more in line to start with. And then as we do that and we learn more, uh, think about what we might want to do is uh, to incentivize new construction to have affordable housing in it so that we aren't getting further behind. Again, you know, we can't require it, but we can incentivize it. And so we need to think about that.
Yes, sir.
And there actually are provisions in which you could create housing zones or requirements for overlay or other pieces that you could require a certain minimum standard. If you, if you wanted to go in that direction, you cannot, you can't require that accessory units are by nature affordable, but you can, you can incentivize those, but you could for larger developments. You know, I think over a certain size, you can, you do have that authority.
I keep thinking we don't have that many areas in town left to develop that would be large enough for such an overlay, but I guess there's, there might be one or two left. Uh, with that, then I'm going to move on to the plan of conservation and development. Issue, we've got, we need to think about really what we want the, you know, main themes of this to be. Abby, I thought you had a.
So I didn't put together a memo on this. This was actually Alan and I had a, a conversation. And so if you may, you know, also want to weigh in on this. But, but basically, um, as we prepare for the, the twenty twenty-five update and we know that funding, at least the first part of the funding so far has, has remained in the budget, um, which is great. Thinking through how we approach the elements of the plan, especially implementation, where have, where were the recommended actions? Have we completed them? Are they still relevant? It's sort of an assessment of, of where we've been and, and where you'd like us to go. So that you are well set up when it's time to actually begin the work of the, the formal revision to the P O C D. You have a strong assessment of, of what you liked, what you didn't like, what was effective, what no longer applies. And some recommendations as we craft an R F P to go out for, for those services. So, so that was kind of the reason for, um, you know, including it, getting folks thinking about it, going back into especially the implementation plan and talking about what's, um, you know, what might fit and what might not anymore. And I'll be quiet. I don't know, Alan, if you had any other thoughts that.
I, I think we face a, a sort of critical situation. The plan that we have is purely transit oriented development. And it hasn't happened. The transit part hasn't happened. We haven't, we people of their cars and we all don't seem to be able to, people don't be inclined to do it. And I think we have to look at that. You know, we incentivize in a sense. We now, you need to look at it, you know. All have, basically, and come to, comes to sort of grips with the affordable housing dilemma and the locational dilemma. The Person School is a good, is a good example of a question. There's a lot of impetus for private housing development on that side. What better place than a piece of publicly owned property? Or publicly controlled at least property? So the assumptions, there are a lot of assumptions that the plan was based on. We really have to examine those assumptions. Take a critical look at what we, what our goals were.
And what would that means is, you know, we should all refamiliarize ourselves with what's in the plan, what we've accomplished and what we didn't. And, you know, do the goals that it sets out, are they still the goals that we currently have? Is that like?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's what you're saying.
And what, what are our goals?
Yeah, what are the goal?
How do we, what's the process for establishing what the goals of the plan should be? It's, it's an outreach. There's a technical functions to making the plan and there's outreach.
Right now, part of that is what we want to be able to bring in the outside consultant for is to help them with the outreach. And, you know, because, you know, as a, as a body of essentially amateurs when it comes to planning, you know, we do need extra support. You know, um, we're all coming in here with our own biases. And, uh, may, you know, I speak for myself. I, I know that I make errors. So I don't want it to always depend on what I'm thinking. I'd like, I do want to hear from the rest of the public. And I need some help getting that information. And I think that's what you're asking for is, you know, can we get public outreach so that we develop proper goals?
Yeah, we use the consultants on the, on that in a, in a series of charrettes.
Right.
A series of meetings to raise basic issues and then to focus in on a list of issues. And then to focus in on specific ones and establish goals in terms of those, like affordable housing. What does it mean for Clinton? Who, who are we going to build housing for? We have some very large parcels that a, a couple of very large parcels and a lot of medium sized ones where there, there's interest, particularly for rental property.
Adam, you had a question statement? Oh, your box went yellow for me, so I thought maybe you. Any other comments? Abby, did you have anything you wanted to add to that?
Well, I think that, so I think this is what the commission has an opportunity to do right now is a precursor almost to the work of bringing in the consultant and doing the charrettes and doing the, the, the really very specific work of the plan update and getting, you know, getting the data updated, doing the technical review, that kind of stuff. I think one of the things that will position the commission well to start that project when the funding is, is finalized is to take a look at the goals and implementation pieces and start thinking about what, what has and hasn't worked. What, if, if there are things that haven't been implemented, why? It's almost like taking the implementation strategy and, you know, I've started, actually started color coding what's been done and what hasn't. And adding a column to sort of start to explain, well, if it hasn't happened, why? And if it has, why? And what's, you know, what's working and what's not? And, and then we start to say, okay, this is information that we can use to craft the requests for proposals or qualifications for a consultant because we want them to be well-versed in handling particular types of questions that we've identified. Or it's something that we're able to give to the consultant once we select someone to say, look, you know, we've done a pretty comprehensive analysis of where we've been. And that frees them up to really focus on things looking forward, because we're able to say, here's our, here's our thought on, on why things, you know, have or haven't worked and why these goals are, are not relevant. So there's certainly a conversation that can happen. You know, as we're, as we're preparing to then go out and, and hire someone to help with, you know, sort of that public outreach piece and really making sure that it's, it's incredibly well rooted in, in what the folks in, in town want to see for their future.
I agree.
Okay, any other comments?
I think maybe, maybe we should start to think about committing with just this, because that's how, those are our two functions in a sense, regulation and planning.
Find another night to have that meeting? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I, I think so.
Well, while we were talking about P O C D, Mr. Chairman, uh, has, uh, anybody looked at John Street? That those, uh, those apartments are coming out pretty nice. Has anybody been down there and looked at them? Yeah.
Yeah, I have. I drove around the whole project.
I, I can't believe it. I mean, it is, you can't do volition. I, I never thought they were going to turn out the way they did. You know, looking at the plans and everything. So it looks, um, pretty nice.
Okay, um, let's move on to the coastal resiliency task force nomination. That's back on Eddie originally said he tried to do that, but he's determined that with everything else he's got going on, it does not going to be feasible. So, um, we'd like to find somebody else from the commission to, uh, join that task force. You don't have to volunteer now. Since I see no quick volunteers right now. But, um, please consider it and we would like to get somebody on there quickly. So if, uh, any of you are interested, please let Abby and I know.
I think that'd be a great job for Martin Jaffe.
Forwarded by the harbor. My name's already been forwarded by the harbor management commission.
So he's already on it.
I, I spoke with, with Carl briefly on it and, you know, it's, if there has to be double duty, that's, that's an option. But really, um, he, he's hoping to, you know, sort of have both, you know, people with independent hats kind of coming in with that, with those roles.
Okay, when do they, when are they going to start meeting?
Um, I believe that the, the council still needs to appoint members. And so there, I think they were waiting for everybody's nominations to come in and have a conversation about where it goes next. In the meantime, staff is meeting and we're, because of the timeline of the grant, we were, the work is, is continuing. Um, and so consultant selection and that kind of stuff is, is going to be coming up fairly quickly. So I know, I know that he's looking to get, get names in front of council to, to consider fairly, fairly quickly.
Okay. Uh, so we probably want to get somebody's name in here before the next regular meeting is what I'm hearing. So please consider it. I will, uh, ask that we get a note out to all members since not everybody's here, asking them to consider it. Okay? Now, we didn't really have a point in here for discussion, but I know, Alan, you had something you wanted to discuss.
Uh, yeah, just when we, uh, had made the decision, I think it was back in December, that we would meet for, um, two more months, uh, January and February, uh, virtually. And then at the February meeting, uh, discussed whether or not we would return to, um, in-person meetings. We didn't have that discussion in February, uh, so, uh, you know, here we are in March, being virtually still. Is this a discussion we should have? Should we make a positive decision one way or the other?
Okay. Yeah, that's a good point. I personally would like to see us try to get back to in-person meetings. And I think that, you know, the COVID risk has gone down. We, I, we went down one level since, uh, Janu- January. So I would be in favor of having the, uh, meetings in person in April.
Again, we, we haven't really gone down since January. We're still medium risk, according to the CDC. Eleven point four for a hundred thousand in hospitalizations and you have to be down below ten to be low risk. So you're still recommending that people over sixty-five mask in public, uh, settings and things of that nature.
Hey, can, can I add to, uh, Martin's? Just a thousand people a day dying from COVID. And I, I know a lot of people that have COVID. And they continue to get COVID. And I think, I know there's some members on this commission that will attest to it, you know, that they had it. And it's still going around. So, I mean, it, it's, it's it's, it's through, they call them super spreaders. You go to a wake, you go to a funeral, you go to a church. I mean, there, there are. I mean, you, you have to keep your distance and there's a thousand people a day going, hospitals are filling up. And, uh, there's a, there's a lot, there's a lot of, um, things going on. So, I mean, it's, I, I'm not going to attend. My house is like a sanctuary. I'm just being honest. I, I, my wife goes on Wednesdays and Thursdays ambulance. So she's all, you know, she wears her mask and everything. I mean, Mike, what do you, what do you think, Mike? You're wrong.
Well, Zoom makes it very easy when I'm traveling to attend, so I'm partial to Zoom for that. But I was going to ask Abby and Kathy what, um, other boards and commissions are doing in general. And I know we had to have the ability. If someone wanted Zoom to be able to broadcast, and I don't know if the town has that, if we have that ability yet, because we have to meet those regulations.
We, to my knowledge, we don't. And I, I'll let Abby speak to it, but I also know Michael Florio had said at the last meeting, he's not here tonight, but he's in Florida, I believe, five months out of the year. So he's only able to attend those meetings in Zoom. Um, but Abby, I think, don't we have to be able to allow if a member wants to attend, we have to give them the opportunity to attend virtually?
It doesn't necessarily have to be via Zoom though, so it sort of reverts back to a little bit of the, the sort of pre-pandemic piece. So if you're holding a meeting exclusively in person, um, then, then that is okay. You have to offer accommodations to folks attending. Or if they're unable to, to give them a way to provide feedback for public hearing and that kind of stuff, folks can potentially call in. We don't have an interactive, um, sort of hybrid meeting option. So the hybrid meeting is where things get a little bit challenging, where you have to offer that to the public as well. And so that's, that's kind of where things are, we, we just don't have the technological capacity. We would likely be able to figure out, um, you know, perhaps special, um, you know, you're trying to figure out the budget to see if we could do like a one-off meeting, if there was something particularly that we wanted to sort of broadcast as, as a webinar, similar to town council meetings and that kind of stuff, that might be a potential. But, but generally speaking, it's sort of Zoom or in person. And then if there's a commission member that needs an accommodation, it would likely be a call in. We, and, and we can see if there's microphone capacity to try to figure out how to, you know, have that person on Zoom. As far as I'm aware, we don't really have those pieces in place now and, and no budget to really enact them.
How are other commissions and boards meeting?
So, um, land use boards and commissions are generally meeting via Zoom. Town council is in person, um, right, our management's in person. So there's, you know, folks are sort of doing it individually. Many are meeting in person again, um, you know, and then communities across the state range. You know, some are exclusively virtual, some are all in person and, and some are leaving it up to each board and commission, which is where Clinton is at right now. So it's, it's really a mix.
Okay, thank you.
Like, you're, 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 you're a professor at a college. I, I mean, I mean, do people, people coming down with COVID at your school, at, at the college?
We still have that, uh, you know, there, there's still COVID at the college. They, but we're at full capacity in the classrooms again. We're back to that. Um, masking is optional.
Do you see a lot of people getting sick though, still?
We, we, our COVID rate, I don't have the number right now, but it, it's gone down on campus. Okay, so, um, but that, that's not this academic year. That's from, you know, last year.
Mike?
Yeah.
I like to make a proposal that we start, we have a lot of work to do. We've outlined the work and that we should go to committees. Reestablish the committees. Maybe the committees can meet one big room, sit apart, take all the precautions, but begin to reintroduce with care. one big room, sit apart, take all the precautions, but begin to reintroduce with care. Uh, the, the open general meeting.
Just to get people comfortable?
I, I'm just saying, I, I, I don't think it's, I'm not saying it's us, Alan. I'm just saying, if we have public hearings, so you, you get a lot of people. You know, you get other people that, that pass it. I mean, I'm just saying, it's a thousand people a day is still there. A thousand. That's a lot of people that, and yes, sir.
I'd just point out that the trend has been downward. The last three months has gone down almost three points.
Okay.
So, so you know, as we get into the spring, the more people outdoors, there'll be lower risk of infection. Um, I, I think probably by next month will be in a low. You know, if the trends continue, we'll be low risk next month. You know, in April, May, I don't, I don't mind meeting in committee. I mean, if you feel
I'm just talking about uh, uh, like public hearings and stuff. You get a lot of people, yeah, I mean, it's
Yeah, well, public hearing we have to work on, but I think for our committee work, um, you know, if somebody feels that they have to be cautious, they can mask up. Otherwise, you know, I, I would be comfortable meeting.
Well, I think, uh, at least the regulations committee, I think we had decided that one was going to be by Zoom because it need, you know, we've got a you know, we want to make sure as many people can come to it as possible.
Okay. Okay. I mean, it's just whatever, I mean, I'll go along with anybody. I just I don't want to get circus off.
I understand. Well, we've got two of us, the two members who said they'd uh, regular stay on Zoom and I said uh, in public, what does the rest of you think?
I, I'm fine with coming back. I, I, I kind of, I'm like with Mike that this was nice and easy, especially when we're out of town, but other committees are coming back. I, I'm okay with Eddie. I hear you and I respect other people's opinions, but you know, four thousand people every day die from car crashes. So we don't stop driving. Um, so I, I, I'm fine to come back if that's what the group chooses.
Okay. And uh,
I share that opinion.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try, try it too.
Okay.
Would you sep- separate us? So.
Ellen, what's your thought? You, you brought this up.
I would like to meet in person. Yes.
Okay. And then Brendan, you haven't, you've been awfully quiet. Uh, what's your opinion?
I'm in favor of in person. Listen, um, you know, this is certainly convenient, but I don't think that we're necessarily being as effective as we need to be and should be. So.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, so for April, um, let, let's plan on that being a, uh, in-person meeting. I don't know. Is the art uh, exhibit up? So the green rooms, is it available?
I will find out. I, I, when we made our calendar, I think that we looked at availability, the green rooms. I think that we're okay, but Chrissy, can you confirm whether or not we know or need to find, do we need to find that out?
There might be kids connection. We'll have to check and see.
Yeah. Check, yeah, roll. Well, we'll send something out tomorrow confirming whether it's available or whether we need to, to do something different and then when we can get back in for regular.
You send all the kids over to Newton's house though.
Is, is the community room at the police station open?
It, it could be. So I know that it's, it's booked regularly, but we can, wherever we need to, to find some space. Yeah.
Yeah, it is nicer. Yep.
Okay. Um, well, that's settled. Then the next item is adjournment. Is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry. I apologize. I looked real quick. If I'm not mistaken, I did schedule us for the green room beginning in April. If I'm not mistaken, but I'll double check. When I looked it up on the website, it says the green room. I'm sorry.
Well, you, you were, just had that premonition. That's great. Okay. Um, who seconded? I didn't catch that.
I'll second it if nobody else.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all in favor? Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening and I'll see you, hopefully some of us at the regulations meeting. Take care.
Good night.